Well, good afternoon. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a regular school board meeting, February nineteenth, two thousand and eight. It is approximately five thirty in the afternoon, and we are in the boardroom, nineteen hundred Price Road, Brownsville, Texas. Please rise for a moment of silence, followed immediately by the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Aguilera?
I hope that you all keep Oscar Barber at long time educated for the school district. Asking all of us that have worked with them that we can.
Thank you, Mr. Aguilera. Space of applause. I pledge my allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance and duty to Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you very much. Moving on to item four, roll call for the record. Everybody is present except Mr. Cortez, and I understand that he'll be running a little late. Item five, recommend approving the agenda of a regular school board meeting of February nineteenth, two thousand and eight, with any corrections or deletions, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Dr. Scuero, the members of the board. There is just one minor correction on closed meeting, item number forty. The agenda should read twenty-one point one zero three. So please make that correction. They forgot one of the ones. It should read twenty-one point one zero three. That's all the corrections.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. I have motion to approve the agenda.
Prove.
Motion by Mr. Parrish, seconded by Mr. Aguilera. On favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item six, recommend approving the minutes of the rescheduled board meeting of February twelfth, two thousand and eight, with any corrections. Are there any corrections to the minutes of this February twelfth meeting? If not, I have motion to approve.
Prove.
Motion by Mrs. Calvane, seconded by Mr. Parrish. On favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item seven, Superintendent's Report, A Conference Presentation, one. Presentation of Brownsville Independent School District Expenditure Report of All Categorical Funds. Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Dr. Scuero. As one of my performance benchmarks, we were asked to provide an evaluation or a report on the categorical funds. So we included all funds, including one ninety-nine. And the first section of it is the object code sixty-two to sixty-six hundred, and that's basically what you spend at the campuses, such as supplies and materials, consultants, that type of cost involved. So they're there. Then you have the local maintenance, which is your one ninety-nine. That's your state and local money. And then section three is the sixty-one hundreds, which is payroll cost. So you can review them at your leisure. If you have any questions already, you already reviewed them. You have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Or you can come by and visit with me, have any particular questions. But that gives you where we're at as of the middle of February.
Question comes from the board. Mr. Aguilera?
First, I want to thank you, yes, for the report. I think it's a very much needed report that we've been asking, so I want to thank you. For those members that see the report, noted that some campuses have large amounts of money. We also need to realize that it's only half of the year, and we still got a lot of things to go on before May. So that's why some of those campuses have large amounts of money as a balance. But guarantee that it'll be expand by May when the last day of school comes around.
Thank you, Mr. Aguilera. Any other questions or comments? If not, we move on to item two. Presentation of Quarterly Investment Report for the period ended December thirty-first, two thousand and seven. Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Dr. Scuero, the members of the board. Once again, this is where we're at on the various investments concerned. If you have any question, I'd be glad to answer them, either myself or Miss Penya. Yes.
Mr. Lehman?
Yeah, how does that compare to date with the markets overall, local and those that we have with TechSpool and the others?
You're looking...
Of the local, yeah.
If you look at the report, the quarterly investment report, you'll see that we have different companies that we do investments with, anywhere from investing in CDs. One thing that we're looking at, of course, the market fluctuates. So anytime we put money into CDs or any type of other investment, whether it's Longstar Liquidity or MBIA, TechSpool, wherever we put our money in, it's going to vary to a certain degree. We're getting the very best we can. One thing Miss Penya and I, and Mr. Fuller and I have discussed is when those CDs cancel out, or we might be looking at actually bidding out CDs where we can get the best possible rates. So those are things that we're looking at. Our investment for what we have right now is very good. We did a little bit better last year, but of course the interest rates were a little bit better last year. So this year, we're doing very reasonable.
And the arbitrage situation, as far as the contract, we contracted out on our bond money with...
Yes. What we're doing with the bond money, of course, it's earning interest right now. It's sitting in the bank. However, we do have arbitrage. We have to, we can't exceed the interest more than what we're going to pay out. Now, the good thing about it is that interest that we're gaining is going to stay with us because if we build those schools, we need furniture. So that interest that we're gaining from the bonds will be used to purchase furniture.
Can we project how much interest, just on that end?
We hope to get a significant amount, ten to fifteen million, by the time it's all over, depending on how fast we use it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Now we move on to item three. Presentation of Quarterly Overtime Report for the period ended December thirty-first, two thousand and seven. Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Dr. Scuero, the members of the board. Once again, this is your quarterly overtime. As you will see, some are very in budget, some are getting close to that edge, and some are already over the edge, as they say, on overtime. But the big departments that have overtime, of course, is transportation. That's sort of what we have to deal with. Maintenance is still okay. However, security is getting very close to the point, but we cannot do without security either. But we need to cover gains, we need to cover after-school activities, we have to cover them. So basically, that's our report. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
What we're doing over last year?
It's about the same. We're doing okay. The same ones that are always up are always up. You know, we just can't control that. At the end, you know, we do balance out in transportation. What a lot of people don't understand is a lot of the overtime that we get, even though we budget it from general fund, as we charge the campuses for tutorials, because they use that tutorial money to pay for transportation too, we reimburse ourselves, and at the end, it all breaks even.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we move on to item four. Presentation of Financial Report for the period ended December thirty-first, two thousand and seven. Mr. Gonzalez.
Once again, if you have any questions on those, I'll be glad.
Questions or comments?
Yes.
Just the food service, are you tracking their balance? Trying to get here to the... Just bear with me. Trying to find it.
Is it a general question or a specific question?
Well, I didn't see it, so I'm trying to find it. What's the page number?
Can we move on? And if you remember your question, you'll ask, Mr. Gonzalez, on your time?
Well, yes, sir. Go ahead.
Okay, item five. Presentation of Quarterly Consultant Report for the second quarter of fiscal year two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Dr. Scuero, the members of the board. Once again, this is for your review, and if you have any questions concerning the consultants.
Questions or comments? Item six. Presentation of Current Levy Tax Collection. Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Dr. Scuero. As you well know, we have, this is the first year we've used the county to levy our current tax collections, and as we always do, we want to have a pulse on what's going on. So I've asked them to do a presentation, and I'll call on Miss Penya to introduce this presentation. Miss Penya?
Thank you. Good evening, President Escobedo, Board Members, and Superintendent Gonzalez. Tonight, we have Mr. Jesse Garcia, Deputy Tax Assessor Collector for the Cameron County that will make a brief presentation on our current tax collections. Mr. Garcia?
I have a handout to pass out. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Jesse Garcia, and I'm with the Cameron County Tax Office. We're here to report on your two thousand and seven current tax collections. As you can see by the handout that's been passed out, the collection chart goes back to October. We've compared the current year, two thousand and seven, with your last three tax years. And as you can see by the percentage of collection, in October, we had actually collected forty-five point fifty-three percent of your taxes, compared to the previous three years, forty percent and forty-two percent in two thousand and four. In November, we collected sixty point oh nine percent of your taxes. In two thousand and six, you had collected fifty-four. Two thousand and five, sixty percent. In two thousand and four, fifty-seven point nine percent. In December, we collected sixty-six percent of your taxes. The previous three years, you had collected sixty-four, sixty-six, and sixty-five. At the end of January thirty-first, two thousand and eight, we had collected seventy-six point twenty-eight percent of your taxes, compared to the previous three years of seventy-six, seventy-seven, and seventy-five. Are there any questions on this particular chart?
Questions, comments? Mr. Parrish?
Thank you, President. Mr. Gonzalez, are deposits are getting on a daily basis?
On a daily basis, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Any complaints from administration?
No, sir. No complaints whatsoever.
The next several pages are just copies of newspaper articles that we have published, and I'll just kind of briefly go through them. We published an article on June the twenty-seventh, two thousand and seven, before we started collecting taxes for BISD, to notify the public that we had started collecting BISD taxes. We again published an article on July first of two thousand and seven. In October of two thousand and seven, we published three notices notifying the public of their discounts, three percent for October, two percent for November, one percent for December. We again advertised the same article on October twenty-fourth. Again, on October twenty-eighth. We published another article on December twenty-third. This advises the public that they've got until the thirty-first of January to pay their taxes before penalties and interest start accumulating. We did another one on Wednesday, December the twenty-sixth. We did another one on January twenty-seventh, two thousand and eight. And this basically informs the public that if they don't pay their taxes on time, that there will be a lawsuit filed. The last two pages, we had a special mail-out, which is referred to as Section thirty-three eleven. This is on all personal property accounts that are delinquent, February the first. They get sent a tax bill. If the taxes are not paid by April first, the attorney fees will be assessed. We sent approximately fifty-three hundred accounts, of which almost half of them had BISD taxes included in them. And the last page is a notice that is going to be published this coming Sunday, and then again in March, for the April first deadline for the personal property accounts that got a tax bill. And that is the report. Is there any other questions on some of the articles, special mail-outs?
Questions or comments? Mrs. Alavan?
So then, we need thirty-four percent of taxes that still need to be collected?
That's correct, ma'am.
And then I had another question on the amounts that are collected. It seems that there's more money collected. Is that the percentage according to the levy?
Yes, ma'am. Your levy for two thousand and seven is fifty-one million, zero, sixty-nine, seven, oh, seven. That's the original levy that we started with, October first, two thousand and seven. It is down to under fifty million right now, with the adjustments from the appraisal district. Our target when we started was ninety-eight percent of your beginning levy, including current and delinquent.
Mr. Lehman?
Yes, sir. A question for administration. And as far as, are you, I guess, any information on public input as far as taxpayers? Was this a good move for us to be more user-friendly, more accessible? Is there any input from the public as far as, or any complaints either way? Or any kudos that it's easier to go to one place to pay your taxes?
Um...
As far as...
Dr. Scuero, the members of the board, Mr. Lehman. You know, I haven't gotten any real feedback on that. For the most part, they're comfortable paying where they're paying. Certainly, the collection rate is about the same as when we had our own tax office throwing through to the attorneys. However, I do want to clear up one thing. You see, why can't we collect it less? Well, you know, I just want to give kudos to you all that the tax rate dropped from a dollar forty-eight to a dollar eight. So when you reduce it by almost a third, your tax rate, you're going to have a little bit less collections. But percentage-wise, we're right on target, and this is what we're looking at. And as far as convenience, I ain't heard any negatives. So when you don't hear complaints, that's usually good. A lot of people don't come up and tell you that's good where we're at, but as long as they don't complain, that means it's a good thing. So I guess I can use it in reverse, Mr. Lehman, and say, I have got no complaints, so that must be a good thing.
And finally, a question for Mr. Garcia, if I can.
Yes, sir.
Your office works well with the delinquent tax firm?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you afford, I know that your office does negotiate with delinquent taxpayers, that, I guess, option's still available for BISD, delinquent taxpayers?
Yes, sir. Yeah, there are two types of contracts that the taxpayers have. One is for delinquent taxes, which includes multiple years, and they can do a payment arrangement at our office or with a law firm. Or they can do a contract for their current taxes, for two thousand and seven taxes only. As long as the contract is done before July first, this prevents the attorney fees from being assessed, as long as they keep their payments. And it's a six-month contract.
But it's now dual. As far as on the city and county, it is also now being offered on the BISD?
Yes, sir.
Whereas before it was not?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay, so that's another added benefit to the distressed taxpayer, that we give them some kind of relief. So, well, I'm glad that things are working out, so...
And of course, they can pay their taxes on any one of our nine branch offices.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you.
Item seven, presentation of delinquent tax collections. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Dr. Scuero. Members of the board, as you well know, we contracted with a new law firm for delinquent tax collections, and we've asked them to presentation tonight also to bring you up to date where we are with our delinquent tax collection. This is presentation, I'll call on Ms. Rosie Penya. Miss Penya?
President Escobedo, Board Members, Superintendent Gonzalez. Also with us tonight, we have Mr. Enrique Peña, no relation, partner with the firm of Peña Esparsa and Garza, who will give us a presentation on our delinquent taxes.
Good evening. Eddie Garza here, speaking on behalf, of course, to avoid any conflict with Miss Penya over there. Thank you for having us, Mr. President, and members of the board. Superintendent Gonzalez, we appreciate the opportunity to stand before you once again and give you an update on our progress and on how we've been doing with your delinquent tax collection. We're pleased to say we have good news tonight to tell you about how we've been doing, and we're proud of our progress, so I want to share it with you. But first, I want to give you a couple of just general points in what we've been doing and what our status is. First of all, you know, we've been working, Penya Esparsa and Garza has been working for the district now for seven months. We started around the second week of July, two thousand and seven, in this ordeal. In the process, we've conducted about forty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven mailouts. What that means is forty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven actual letters, correspondence that we've sent out to your taxpayers, encouraging them to become current and to pay their delinquent taxes. We've conducted approximately eight thousand and forty field inspections. That's actual onsite visits by our staff members who go to certain businesses or residences and try to speak directly to the taxpayer, communicate directly to the taxpayer, and ask them to please become current and advise them of the opportunity to do that before the need for a lawsuit or anything like, any more aggressive collection matters would take place. We've, currently, there's about two hundred and twenty-nine lawsuits that we have that we file that are chasing approximately nine hundred and nineteen thousand dollars' worth of tax revenue. That tax revenue, of course, is the hardest to collect, because once it gets to the point of actually filing a lawsuit, this is a taxpayer who's already, hasn't taken advantage of the opportunity from the first letter, or the second letter, or the home sites, or the visits to come current. So those are usually a little more difficult to collect. But just to give you a figure, an idea of what's outstanding and what is potentially going to get judgments on, is around nine hundred and nineteen thousand, five, sixty-eight. Now, here's the good news. Last year, during this seven-month time period, if you were to take from July to the present, the firm collecting for you collected approximately three million, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars. Okay, so during that seven-month period, a year previous to our involvement, you're looking at about three point three million dollars. In the seven months that we've been working on behalf of the district, your collections are up. They're up to four million, twenty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. What that means is, versus the seven months in the year prior to our involvement, and the seven months that we've been working for you, it's a difference of approximately six hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars. So what we're proud of is the fact that we've actually increased your collections by still passing on the lower rate for attorney's fee, attorney's fee penalties, I'll call it, to your taxpayers versus the attorney's fee rate they would have been paying last year. And that amounts to about six hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars of actual revenue. That's base tax that goes back into your coffers for your use in your work here in the district. Our goal is obviously, we're very proud of this. We've met our goals, we've exceeded where we want to be at this point. Our goal is to keep working and to keep having an aggressive approach of trying to increase these collections. Obviously, we're not stopping and laying down where we are. We hope that without the, throughout the year, you'll see a consistent increase over a twelve-month period, significantly more than you collected last year, which would mean more money for you, more money for our community here at Brownsville, so you can spend it on our schools and invest it here. So the last thing I'll tell you is, being members of this community, of course, and living here in Brownsville, one of the personal satisfactions we have is that we can try to play some part in increasing collections to increase revenue to you, because we know how much, how difficult it is for the district to have to budget and to attribute money in certain areas. Certainly, this is money that's going to be well-spent in our district, and we're proud to be a part of that, so... Do you have any questions in particular?
Mr. Lehman?
Yes, sir. Once again, I pose the same question. Everything's working with the firm? No problems?
Yes, sir. Dr. Lehman, the board, we have a good working relationship with the firm. We've not encountered any problems, sir. Very profitable.
And I might add that the extra advantage is now the user-friendliness by incorporating the tax assessor collector to collect our current. I guess, I assume that a delinquent individual can also pay at the county?
Yes, that's correct.
So that's an added feature that wasn't there before. So consequently, there's, you know, there should have been an increase in taxes, collections. So I think we've done a pretty good job of getting it all together, and I commend you for keeping it all congruent.
Thank you. And we're certainly pleased to be working with the county, and everything's been going real well. We're very cooperative efforts, so thank you.
To your other question, Mr. Lehman, concerning what responses from the community, we've heard the...
Yes, sir. I forgot that one.
Yeah, no, we've heard it in our office that they're happy to be able to pay at one location.
Right.
Sending them, you know, and it was easy for us, too, you know, and sending them one location, and they can pay, and we did get, we've been getting good responses.
I appreciate the input, because I thought it would be advantageous, and I think it would have been a plus for the taxpayer out there. To me, that was one of the complaints that was constantly conveyed to me at the coffee class, so I'm glad you, things are working out.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman. Mr. Cortez, thank you for joining us. Mr. Aguilar?
Thank you, Dr. Scuero. And definitely, I'm very proud of this report, and also very proud of the company that is doing business with us. We saw, right away, we saw some progress. And also, what I like, and I want to congratulate you, is the aggressiveness, the assertiveness, that you go after these delinquent, what do you call them? People have not paid their taxes.
They're delinquent taxpayers.
And some of them are the twenty, the thirty thousand dollars. And so I'm very pleased that you aggressively are going after those accounts and together, working together with the county. So my hat's off to you, sir.
Thank you.
For the wonderful job you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aguilar. I like how you worded that you have exceeded your goals. That certainly speaks highly of, it speaks to all of your work, so thank you, Mr. Garza and Partners. Mr. Lehman?
For the record, I am delinquent, and I'll say, hopefully, that's fine.
You're delinquent, Mr. Aguilar. I doesn't even know what you call delinquent taxes.
Be sure you give my personal visit now.
Extreme to another, right?
Give him the letter right now.
I hadn't told you lie, really. You get penalized.
I did, I personally...
If I asked that question about the contract, then I will be there.
Mr. Parrish?
The rent's been kind of slow. You have very reasonable payment plans at that...
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to echo the sentiments, Mr. Aguilar, and the rest of my colleagues, that I'm glad to see the county and your law firm, Penya Esparsa and Garza, working very well together on the benefits of BISD and the collection rate and your goals. Thank you.
Mr. Calvane?
I like how you started. Good news for our district, and I was very glad to hear that over half a million dollars is coming back. So thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to work with you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you, Mr. Peña Esparsa and Garza. No relations up to Ms. Rosie Penya. Item number eight, presentation on report from BISD Bond Resort Committee. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Dr. Scuero, the members of the board. This is a standing board agenda item as far as they get to report on the first board meeting or the second board meeting of the month. So I don't know if anybody's here, or Mr. Springsteen. Have you made contact with those individuals since you've there?
Yes, sir. Tried to make contact with Mr. Zayas, but was not able to attend this evening, or Butch was either.
So there's no reports?
They sent a pin chater?
They were not able to send a pin chater.
At least they have been notified, so that's, we're doing our part. B, we're not item, B, signing board agenda items. Nine, board counters. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Dr. Scuero, the members of the board. I do have a few highlights that I'd like just to share with you all and the public. We do have a budget committee meeting, our first one of the year, for the, to start preparing for the new budget, and that's on Thursday. We also have a policy committee meeting on Thursday at six o'clock. The budget committee meeting is at five-thirty. If you can, at Lopez High School on Saturday, we'll be having the BISD All-City Bank Concert at seven PM. If you can make it out there, we'd be glad to have you. Of course, next week is an interesting week with Charolde. We start out on Friday with Fiesta de la Cortica at seven PM at Sam Stadium. There'll be, the schools will be dancing. We do have the Children's Parade on the twenty-eighth. Of course...
Corticas on Monday?
Yes.
Corticas on Monday.
Charolde holiday, of course, is on Friday. There's no classes. We do have early dismissal on the twenty-eighth for the Children's Parade, and that's, everybody will get the opportunity to go and see the parade. The following month, in March, of course, the important thing is, the week of the third is, we start with tax testing in different areas, so we'll be working with that. And then we have spring break on the week of the tenth through the fourteenth.
Questions or comments on the board? If not, we move on to item eight, public audience. The next item on our agenda is public comment period. There are no public comments. Good, good. Thank you. Thank you very much. Moving on to item nine, consent agenda, general function. I have received a list from my colleagues indicating that there is a need to discuss and or deliberate the following agenda items. So we will be addressing item number fourteen, twenty-one, thirty-nine, and forty. Fourteen, twenty-one, thirty-nine, and forty. I will now entertain a motion to approve the recommendation...
Prove, move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Parrish, seconded by Mr. Lehman. On favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item fourteen. Recommend approval to revise the delegation of authority rules regarding, uh, procurement of construction services as authorized by section forty-four point zero-three-twelve, delegation A of the Texas Education Code. Uh, Mr. Cortez?
Yeah, um, I had a, Mr. Aguilar, I circulate, I was gonna be a few minutes late. Uh, I had a, I had a question. It says, obviously, revise the delegation of authority rules. I, what exactly is it that you're revising? I, I don't believe I ever looked at the original one, so I, I was just curious. I know sometimes when, when you give us updates on policy, you'll strike out, and then, in different color, you'll indicate what the new language is, and I didn't see it set up this way on, on this item, so I'm just wondering what the changes are exactly.
There, there are no changes on the language. It's strictly on the ranking sheet. And the ranking sheet was because of the fact that this, uh, this year, with the, with the new construction, we're going to have a lot of, uh, companies from outside of, uh, Brownson Valley bidding, simply because of the simple fact that bonding capacity, like for a high school, when you're going to be looking at fifty-plus million dollars for the high school. So when we were looking at that, we needed to change, because it was basically, it could penalize some of the outside companies as far as being the best value for the district if we didn't change it a little bit. So we structured it more in accordance with what we think we're gonna need, and it's, looked like it's gonna work out pretty well. As far as the, the other sections of it, nothing has changed at all.
Just the criteria and the weight for the points?
The weights, that's it. It's a real good formula. Uh, Brett, Mr. Springsteen, and Oscar's worked on this, and we think it's a very good formula, because, especially because of the changes we're gonna be having as far as outside bidders are concerned.
This is a change that's gonna stay throughout, just the bond program, or?
It changes for, for...
Throughout?
Throughout, until we change it again. The last time we introduced this was, oh, I don't know. Two thousand and three?
That was my one...
But the wording has not changed at all, in any other.
Any more discussion on item fourteen? If not, a motion to approve?
A motion.
Motion by Mr. Powers, seconded by Mr. Cortez, on the favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item twenty-one. Recommend awarding bid number zero-eight dash zero-six-zero bottled water and related services to several vendors. Mr. Lehman?
Yes, sir. I, uh, I've been out of town, I just got in late, uh, Monday, and, and I would, uh, I have concerns that I would like to discuss with the superintendent, and I'd like my colleagues to, uh, afford me the opportunity to be able to table this item, uh, if possibly, uh, at a, at a later date that, that the superintendent feels, uh, adequate, uh...
We can bring it back on the fourth. By that time, we'll have plenty of time, because...
So I, I'd, I'd make a motion to table this item.
Yeah, a motion by Mr. Lehman to postpone this item until the meeting of the fourth. Seconded by Mr. Aguilar, on the favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item ten. Close meeting at Pursuit and Test Government Code, section five-five, one point zero-seven-one.
Uh, excuse me, uh...
Mr. Lehman?
Super, um, Mr. Board President. Can I go back to that item that I wanted, on, on the review of the, of the, uh, of your budget, of the, uh, finance, uh, report? I had a question.
Sure, alright.
On the, uh, page eighteen, uh, just simply so we understand. I couldn't find it. Uh, the, uh, the expenditures versus the actual budget, it, uh, there's a deficit, of course, uh, and it looks like we'll be short for the year. Uh, what is the actual fund balance now? Is that, food service had amassed a, a, a fund balance, uh, of, so, how, what is the fund balance now?
Hey, I really don't know what the balance, balance is. It's about seven million, more or less, six to seven million. But it's not going to be, we're not gonna be under. No way are we gonna be under. You gotta remember, we expand, and then we get reimbursed. So the expenses will always show greater than the revenues, because we don't get revenues until we actually expend it. This is why we have to keep a healthy fund balance, 'cause we gotta pay. And as we pay, we turn in our receipts. It's like when we go on a trip, we go spend it, and then we get reimbursed, same thing here.
Well, in the past, they, they would, they'd keep a running fund balance, and it's not showing up, so I would like to see that.
If you want to, we can give you a running fund balance and the same.
Okay, that's all. That was my question.
Sure.
Great, back to item ten, close meeting. At Pursuit and Test Government Code, section five-five, one point zero-seven-one, et sec. Board now goes to close session. The board reconvened after close meeting. Item thirty-nine, recommend the proposed discharge of a teacher employed under the continuing contract for good cause, AAG. Do you have a motion? Motion by Mr. Cortez, seconded by, by myself, on the favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item forty, recommend approval to terminate the employment of a teacher probationary contract employee, uh, JDLG, at the end of two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight school year. Um, twenty-one oh-three, ATC, and DFAB legal, do you have a motion? Motion by Mrs. Escalaván, seconded by myself, again, on the favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Uh, B, composition with attorney, do you have a motion?
President?
Mr. Chukulunga?
Uh, under, uh, the, uh, A and B, uh, move to accept the, uh, settlement and reimburse the family's attorney, attorney's fees in the amount discussed in the executive session?
I have a motion from Mr. Chukulunga, do I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Escalaván, on the favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
And just for the, just for the record, Mr. President, that was forty-one, A and B.
Forty-one, A and B. Thank you for the clarification. Um, announcements, we've already kind of gone over them. Budget meeting on Thursday, twenty-first, at five-thirty. Uh, policy meeting on the twenty-first at five, at six PM. Next regular board meeting is on Tuesday, March the fourth, here at the Administration Building, at five-thirty. And there's an insurance committee meeting on Thursday, March the sixth, here at the Administration Building, at five-thirty. Any other announcements, Mrs. Escalaván?
Yes, I'd like to request of administration for a curriculum meeting, and also, I'd like to remind the public to go out and vote.
Thank you, Mrs. Escalaván. Are, are the, would the date be pending on the curriculum meeting? Okay, great. If nothing else, I have a motion to approve, to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Lehman, seconded by Mr. Cortez, on the favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, have a good night.